Okay, I'd like to call it the order of this hearing, City Council meeting of April 12, 2022. We'll start off with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible, literate, and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Bill Combs?
Here.
Claus?
Here.
Artino? Cap?
Here.
Dyke?
Here.
Peggy?
Next on the agenda is the, oh.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Claus.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Artino from the meeting tonight.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Claus?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
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 Peggy?
Yes.
Bill Combs?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from November 23rd, March 8th, and March 22nd. Mr. Dyke?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the minutes from November 23rd, 2021, March 8th, 2022, and March 22nd, 2022 be approved as written.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next is the audience comments. Citizens may address their concerns to the City Council. Please state your name and address for the recorded journal. We'd like to keep it to a three-minute time limit. Anyone? Okay. Moving forward, we have no old business. We do have new business. To start off, I would like to make a motion that ordinance number 2022-23 be taken off the agenda. Mr.? Mr. Lasco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to provide some clarification for everyone's benefit, this is in relation to the Conagra property. More specifically, if you'll remember, the city had negotiated a land swap agreement with ODNR, in which we were providing them a small piece of the northern property that the city owns, and we were receiving a piece that ODNR owns. We have received the deeds finally from Governor Mike DeWine as of last week, and this legislation was going to ultimately consolidate our larger parcel with the piece of property we were getting from ODNR. Unfortunately, the deeds are still not recorded, as there's some title work and survey work that still needs to be done from the engineers themselves. We expect that to probably happen early next week, so until that's done, we thought it best to hold off on the actual consolidation, since one of the two parcels we don't legally own as of this moment. So, our hope is to have that on the agenda next meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Lasco? Final adoption.
Cap?
Yes.
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 Bill Combs?
Yes.
Next is ordinance number 2022-9.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Claus.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to waive the three reading rule and place ordinance number 2022-9 on its first reading, please.
Questions on the three reading? Roll call.
Claus?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Aggie?
Yes.
Bill Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Ebert.
Ordinance number 2022-9, ordinance to revise codified ordinances by adopting current replacement pages.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Claus.
I'd like to place ordinance number 2022-9 as an emergency measure, please.
Questions on the emergency? Roll call.
Claus?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Aggie?
Yes.
Bill Combs? Yes.
Mr. Lasco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is standard ordinance that we bring to council probably two or three times a year, just based on updates to state code and also our codified ordinances that we do throughout the year. So, this is going to update the city ordinances through the end of February 2022, and updating, and we're adapting updates to the state ordinances through the end of 2021. But as you can imagine, this is everything from changing our ordinances related to rezonings, updates we've done to transient rentals, things like the combination of design review and the planning commission that we've done over the last couple of months. So, pretty standard activity, but just us updating our codified ordinances.
Any questions for Mr. Lasco? Final adoption.
Claus?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Aggie?
Yes.
And next is ordinance number 2022-19.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bill Combs.
Make a motion to waive the three reading rule and place ordinance number 2022-19 on its first reading.
Questions on the three reading rule? Roll call, please.
Bill Combs?
Yes.
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Yes.
Aggie?
Yes.
Mr. Ebert.
An ordinance ready approval petition to vacate a portion of Kirkwood Road considering approximately 0.1204 acres immediately to Erie County while permit of parcel numbers 4500 curl 487 dot 00 curl, 45 curl 0488 dot 000, 45 00 489 00 curl, 45 00 488 dot 001, 45 00 181 dot 001.
Mr. Mayor.
Bill Combs.
I move that ordinance number 2022-19 be placed as an emergency measure.
Questions on emergency? Roll call.
Bill Combs?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. Lasco.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the final piece of legislation as relates to the partial vacation of Kirkwood Road. As a reminder, the city is looking to vacate just over .1 acres of the southern portion of Kirkwood, and those would be dedicated and vacated for the West family, so that they can make improvements to their property. This obviously is an unimproved road, but because it's been planted, we do need to vacate the southern portion of that. So, excited to get through this process, so that they can make their improvements that I know they're looking forward to. So, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lasco? Final adoption.
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Next is resolution number 25-2022.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greaves.
I make a motion waiving the three reading rule and placing resolution number 25-2022 on its first reading.
Questions on the three reading? Roll call.
Greaves?
Yes.
Aggie?
Yes.
Bill Combs?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Mr. Ebert.
Resolution authorizing city manager to report the bid and enter to an agreement with North Star Contracting Paper Material to the Huron Fish Cleaning Facility project amount not to exceed $516,305.
Very good. Mr. Lasco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're excited to present this long-awaited resolution to enter into contract with North Star, which is a contractor out of Cleveland, for just over $516,000. They were not the lowest bidder on the base bid, but they are the lowest bidder as relates to including alternate one, which is the installation of some additional make-ready lanes, which was at the request of ODNR. So, that makes North Star the lowest bidder. What I did want to highlight that we're really excited about is between the construction costs, the previous design costs, and then the next resolution, which relates to the inspection costs, the total cost of this project is now about $605,000. The city is in receipt of a $500,000 grant from ODNR, and we're happy to report, we got written notification from ODNR on Friday, that they're going to contribute another $80,000 to the project as well. We do need to bring ultimately a grant amendment to council, which I envision we'll do at the next meeting. But again, between the $580,000, we do have a pending grant application that Mr. Steinhardt has submitted on behalf of the city to Shores and Islands, Ohio. But we're looking at really reducing the city's exposure on this project to potentially $15,000 to $20,000 for what's going to be a great amenity for Huron, but ultimately the region as well. So, we're excited to get moving, and based on this schedule, you know, we're hoping to have the facility up and running sometime in August. It was ultimately going to be July 1st. Now, we're 45 days past when we got the bids, but I think our team's very confident with having that facility completed in August in advance of when we know the facility and the boat launch gets very busy for fall fishing season. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lasco? Mr. Steinhardt, you have anything to add, or? Okay.
What's the anticipated end date or finish date for this project?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilman Dyke. I think we're hoping for mid-August, and that's assuming, however, there's no delays from a material standpoint. So, again, all thing goes well, we'd be talking mid-August.
Awesome.
Any other questions? Final adoption.
Greaves?
Yes.
Aggie?
Yes.
Bill Combs?
Yes.
Cap?
Next, on the agenda, resolution number 36-2022.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Greaves.
I make a motion waiving the three reading rule and placing resolution number 36-2022 on its first reading.
Questions on the three reading? Roll call.
Greaves? Yes.
Aggie?
Yes.
Bill Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Ebert.
Resolution number 36-2022, a resolution authorizing city manager to accept the proposal entered into an agreement with OHM Advisors for ensuring inspection services related to Huron Fish Cleaning Facility project amount not to exceed $30,000.
Good. Mr. Lasco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, as mentioned with most, if not all, of our construction projects, we always do have a construction inspection component as part of the project to sort of be our eyes and ears on the ground, which OHM is proposed to be for this project. The $30,000 proposed for the construction inspections was included in the previously mentioned sort of all-in $605,000. So, grant funds from ODNR and potentially Shores and Islands, Ohio can help offset this cost as well. But again, even without that additional grant from Shores and Islands, Ohio, the city already budgeted $50,000, which was in the 2022 budget for this project, which again, I think we're going to be able to cut at least in half, which we're really excited about. But again, this was included as part of that overall $605,000 to get us through the whole construction project.
Very good. Any questions? Final adoption.
Yes.
Aggie?
Yes.
Bill Combs?
Yes.
Cap?
Next, resolution number 43-2022.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bill Combs.
I make a motion to waive the three reading rule and place resolution number 43-2022 on its first reading.
Questions on the three reading rule? Roll call.
Bill Combs?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. Ebert.
Resolution number 43-2022, resolution authorizing city manager to enter to an agreement on behalf of the city of Huron, Ohio, Huron Chamber of Commerce relative to their Lakefront Market event to be held at Lakefront Park on Friday, June 10, 2022, and Saturday, June 11, 2022.
Mr. Lasco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're obviously excited to partner with the Chamber of Commerce once again this summer, but with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Steinhardt to just provide a little bit of detail for council and the public.
Thank you, Mr. Lasco. Yes, Mr. Lasco's mentioned, yeah, we're excited to partner with the Chamber. I could answer any questions on behalf of the Chamber, but it's basically the night of the 10th, and then they all day on Saturday, the 11th. Note, they're asking for some road closures, which is the same they have done in the past. This is the fourth annual, if approved. Basically, at Wall Street to Williams and Center Street at Park, we work kind of with our street department and close those areas off. The event has grown over the years. I think a lot of our residents, and we're getting a lot of visitors enjoying it, so happy to answer any questions.
Do we have extra security?
Yeah, so we work with the police department through that. They formally haven't requested exactly what they want. Last couple of years, they've done some night security for them, and then throughout the day with the regular.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Steinhardt? Mr. Lasco. Final adoption.
Yes.
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Yes.
Aggie?
Next on the agenda is resolution number 44-2022.
Mayor.
Mr. Hagy.
Move that the three reading rule is waived and resolution 44-2022 be placed on its first reading.
Questions on the three reading rule? Roll call, please.
Aggie?
Yes.
Bill Combs?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Mr. Ebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 44-2022, a resolution authorizing the execution of a certain letter of support, United States Department of Transportation, leading to the funding request from the Ohio Department of Transportation on a plan to make improvements known as US 6 corridor project.
Mr. Lasco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first of two resolutions in front of council this evening related to this project, and is a follow-up to a recently-held work session we had, I believe, last meeting. This first resolution is seeking a letter of support from council to be submitted to the US Department of Transportation on behalf of the State of Ohio Department of Transportation, specific to the US 6 project. This project is a result of a study that was undertaken in 2019 that was looking at substantial and comprehensive improvements from the city of Huron to the city of Sandusky along US 6. Most specifically, on a very high level, what this project is looking to do is looking at making major intersection improvements at three intersections on Ry Beach, the two at the highway interchange, and the one at Cleveland Road and US 6, or excuse me, Ry Beach and US 6. Also looking at road widening in front of Sawmill Creek Resort. And really, the most exciting piece of this could be the installation of a seven-mile off-road multi-use path that would connect Huron to the city of Sandusky on the north side of US 6. It's really an exciting project in that it's brought together a lot of our political jurisdictions as part of this project, including the city of Sandusky, Huron Township, Perkins Township, Huron, Erie County, and even the railroad is at the table as part of this project. So, the State Department of Transportation is seeking federal funding through what's called a RACE grant that goes to the US Department of Transportation, that we hope would fund the overwhelming majority of this project. So, really, what we're looking here is for the letter of support, or ODOT, for their submission to the US Department of Transportation for this project, which is in total an approximate $30 million project. Really is going to benefit the region from a traffic flow standpoint, an access standpoint, and really a pedestrian and multimodal safety standpoint as well. So, we're really excited to have this in front of council for consideration.
Any questions for Mr. Lasco? Final adoption.
Aggie?
Yes.
Bill Combs?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Next is resolution number 45-2022.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hagy.
I move that the three reading rules waived and resolution 45-2022 be placed on its first reading.
Questions on the three reading rule? Roll call.
Aggie?
Yes.
Bill Combs?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Mr. Ebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 45-2022, a resolution conditionally authorizing expenditure of city funds not to exceed $1 million relating to the Ohio Department of Transportation's plan to make improvements known as US 6 Connectivity Corridor Project.
Mr. Lasco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we've been in discussions with both District 3 ODOT office and ODOT's central office, obviously, one of the things that's going to maximize these applications' potential for funding is to be able to show that there's local support from a funding standpoint into these projects. Through these conversations, it's been estimated that they would like to generate somewhere between $3 and $5 million in local support, both from local jurisdictions and then also Erie County, to really maximize the potential of these applications from a competitiveness standpoint. We're fortunate that we anticipate that we will have the Sawmill Creek Resort TIF as a source of payment for any contribution that would be requested of the city of Huron. Based on the total scope of the project, and what we anticipate is going to be the benefit, not only again for Huron specifically, but the broader region, we felt comfortable asking council to commit up to $1 million for this project. A couple of caveats or conditions that we also put in the resolution from a timing standpoint. First, we stated that these funds would only be committed to the project in 2023 or later. Secondarily, because we still have to put the finishing touches on the final annexation and the creation of the Sawmill Creek TIF, we did put a condition in there that this million-dollar commitment is contingent on those funds being available in the TIF account as well. Again, if there was a worst-case scenario and something unraveled, the city would not be committed to that million-dollar commitment. So, with that, again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lasco? Any questions for Mr. Hall? Final adoption.
Aggie?
Yes. Bill Combs?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Okay, next is resolution number 46-2022.
Mayor.
Mr. Claus.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to place resolution, waive the three reading rule and place resolution 46-2022 on its first and final reading, please.
Questions on the three reading? Roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Aggie?
Yes.
Mr. Ebert.
Resolution number 46-2022, mine had 2021. A resolution amending an agreement with the state of Ohio Office of the Auditor for Additional Work Associated Internal Service Fund Matters, leading to the annual audit for calendar year 2020, to increase the total fee for services rendered to amount not to exceed $28,536.
Mr. Lasco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple meetings ago, staff had presented an agreement with the state auditor's office to undertake the 2020 audit for $27,716. I believe the state auditor copied all of council on a required amendment to that expense a couple weeks ago. Based on some additional work that is necessary on the state auditor's part, that additional expense is $820, which would increase the total contract with the state auditor's office to $28,536. So, we just wanted to bring this small amendment to council, given that last agreement, based on its total amount required council approval.
Any questions for Mr. Lasco? Final adoption.
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Aggie?
Yes.
Okay. Next is resolution number 47-2022, and I'd like to make a motion that the three reading rule be waived, and resolution number 47-2022 be placed on its first final reading. Any questions on that? Roll call. Mr. Ebert.
Resolution number 47-2022, a resolution authorizing city manager to approve a grant application submission by the Huron Fire Department to the Ohio Department of Commerce State Fire Marshal.
Mr. Lasco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is simply a request to submit application to the Division of Commerce on behalf of Huron Fire Department for a total not to exceed $13,638. If approved, this would help the city purchase three complete sets of bunker gear. I do want to mention that the bunker gear replacement is in the equipment replacement schedule in the upcoming years, so I credit our fire department with looking ahead and looking for available grant opportunities as they present themselves, to help offset some of those local costs for things that are in our capital replacement plan and equipment replacement plan. So, again, appreciate all their efforts and your consideration of this request.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Lasco?
We need to vote on the waiving the three reading.
Okay. Questions on three reading? Roll call.
Cap?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Aggie?
Yes.
Okay. Now, final adoption.
Cap?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Aggie?
Yes.
Bill Combs?
Yes.
Next, we have the city managers discussion. Mr. Lasco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, those in the audience, and those watching at home. I just wanted to start off with a few economic development updates as we're moving a few of these projects along. As mentioned, at next meeting, I do anticipate presenting to council two school compensation agreements and a CRA agreement as relates to a proposed tax abatement for South Shore Marines' next expansion project. I do want to provide a small update in that E. Hovey has considered their school compensation agreement, and they have approved that compensation agreement as of April 6th. And just to remind everyone, these compensation agreements are drafted in a way that will keep both school districts whole from an anticipated tax revenue standpoint, but just something we have to do to memorialize that structure within the abatement. So, we'll have all those resolutions and ordinances for council at next meeting. Also, want to mention, we're hoping to wrap up tomorrow morning, finalization of the tax abatement for Buckeye Sports, which will be constructing about a $5 million facility on Lake Erie Parkway across from Goodwill. The city has approved all of their agreements, as has E. Hovey and Huron Schools, but because of, again, its location, we actually have to receive Board of Commissioners approval from Erie County. That is going to their Board of Commissioners tomorrow morning at 9:30, so we hope that's the final step in getting that project from an incentive standpoint across the finish line. As previously mentioned, just a few notes on Conagra. Again, we were happy to report that we did get the governor's deed last week from ODNR, which we are in the process of recording. We'll then immediately follow that up with the lot consolidation, hopefully, at next meeting. But I also do want to put on council's radar as well, there obviously will be a public roadway that will come off Cleveland Road into the project. The planning commission did approve that roadway dedication and plat back in 2020, but that has never been presented to council. So, I'm hoping sometime in May, we actually bring that dedication to council. And one of the things we've been talking about internally, which we'll want to talk about, we do have the ability to dedicate the road without naming it upfront, but at some point, we're probably going to want to have conversations about proper naming for that roadway as well. But again, we can do the dedication without that naming right upfront. Also, do want to share a good update with our partners at Huron Township. Obviously, we've been in conversations with them about extending sidewalks on the east side of town from Gateway Boulevard to Huron Green. One of the things we were hoping to start off with was moving forward with the design process. That's about $40,000 to $45,000, we believe, to undertake that design, and we have gotten approval from the trustees at Huron Township to move forward with that design and split the cost 50/50. The city has already budgeted for our half of the design cost, so we hope to bring an agreement as early as next council meeting to move forward with that design cost. So, we appreciate the township's continued partnership with the city. Also, finally, the installation of all the streetlights on Cleveland Road is complete. Once we saw that installation in the fall, we noticed there were four or five lamps that needed to get replaced, weren't operating well, or broken, so that's 100% complete at this point. Also, just wanted to put on council's radar, we're in conversations with OHM and the planning department about seeking approval to submit an application to Erie County's Metropolitan Planning Organization in late April for their surface transportation funding. We're still working with OHM and the planning department on what projects may make sense to submit, but I do anticipate us seeking approval from council for that submission at our next meeting. Also, following up on a work session related to local preference ordinance, based on the results of that work session, it did seem like there was general consensus on moving forward with an ordinance on which we would provide a preference of 4% for those businesses that are bidding on contracts, instruction contracts or supply contracts, a 4% for those that are headquartered in Huron or Huron Township, and 2% for those that are located and headquartered in Erie County. One of the things that was still hanging out there was looking at some type of cap that we would put on that local preference, and in talking to our department heads and staff, what we're ultimately going to seek to propose to council at next meeting is a $10,000 preference for projects up to $500,000, and a $25,000 preference for projects that are over half a million dollars. So, looking at two tiers for that cap on what that preference credit will be, and certainly looking forward to discussion at next council meeting on that. Also, do just want to note, we did have folks reach out to us from Scooter Ding Ding. If you'll remember, this company from last year, we entered into an agreement, a one-year agreement that had two one-year renewals for the placement of those racks on city property, namely, the Boat Basin and Nickel Plate. So, we are looking, just on the staff level, we're in agreement, as is the company, to agree to extend that through the 2022 season. The existing terms of the underlying agreement will remain the same. So, we're excited for another year to partner with that company. Also, just want to mention on behalf of Parks and Rec to note that Patricia Irvin is retiring at the, in May, after 10 years of employment with the city. Her dedication and knowledge of overall operations of Parks and Rec will be missed. operations of Parks and Rec will be missed, but we certainly wish her all the best as she enters retirement. Based on the retirement beginning of the week of, actually, it was this week, I believe, Doug, Jennifer Kilbury will be assuming the part-time administrative coordinator position in Parks and Rec. This includes program registrations, computer processing, filing, marketing, customer service, and overall support and communications for the department. Also included within this job description is producing the community outreach publications like the Huron Light, newly revamped annual report, and the activity brochure guides in-house. So, we're excited to welcome Ms. Kilbury and certainly want to wish Patricia well in retirement. Two notes on upcoming contracts. Everyone, I believe, is aware that the Republic Services contract is set to expire at the end of June, although there are renewals built into that agreement on a yearly basis. We have discussed this fairly extensively at several of our committees early in 2022, and I think there was pretty unanimous thought to exercise the one-year option, starting July 1st through the end of June 2023. As such, by exercising that option, customers will not experience any change to their service level or cost. In talking with Stuart Hamilton, we do anticipate undertaking a request for proposal as early as the fall of 2022 to make sure we're well ahead of when that new contract, or excuse me, when the one-year renewal is up in 2023. Secondarily, our contract with Sealy Savage is also up very early June. We are likely to recommend a one-year renewal with SSEG for Legal and Law Director Services for the time period of June 22 through May of 2023. We have heard that there will be no cost increase for this one-year renewal, which we're very thankful of and look forward to continue that partnership. So, we're hoping to bring that recommendation to council sometime in May. Just finally, upcoming meetings. Next city council meeting is April 26th at 6:30 in the council chambers. Planning Commission is April 27th at 5 o'clock in the council chambers. And a reminder to everyone that the State of the Community, sponsored by Huron Chamber and BG SU Firelands, will be held on April 20th at the Cedar Point Center at BG SU Firelands. Doors open at 6:30 p.m. That concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lasco. Any questions for Mr. Lasco? Mr. Claus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Matt, I just had a question on the lights over the actual bridge and the river. We had talked about possibly either using some of the lights that were taken down, and I know there were some alternates being looked at. What's the status of that? Just blend those together with all the new lights.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilman Claus. So, the good news is, we are in possession of the lamp heads. As you mentioned, we did approach Ohio Edison very early on, asking if they would abandon their poles over the bridge so that we could install the heads that we're sitting on, on those poles. Very quickly, they told us that in early 2022, they were not looking to abandon those poles. I can tell you, we're in continuous conversations with Nick Catseros, who's their representative, governmental affairs representative. They understand that our desire is to still have those poles abandoned so that we can ensure consistency from an aesthetic standpoint. So, we're in ongoing conversations with Ohio Edison to still make that happen, but no official update that they have approved any type of abandonment thus far. But they understand our desire.
Thank you.
Mr. Hagy.
Yeah, a couple of questions. The sidewalk that you mentioned going from Gateway out east, what was the total estimated cost on that?
Sure. Through you, Mayor, to Councilman Hagy. I believe the estimated cost was about half a million dollars all-in, again, as a contractor's cost estimate for that project.
And I got three. The tree assessment program, has it been any movement on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilman Hagy. I hate to put Mr. Engel on the spot, but I am going to look at Eric on the potential progress on the tree assessment program. I do know we've got to make revisions to our codified ordinances because of the assessment component of it, but I'm trying to figure out where we're at from a timing standpoint. I do know that we were putting most of our efforts on finishing, excuse me, the signage code updates, but I don't know if you're able to provide anything on the tree ordinance assessment update.
Yeah, and I'm not so much worried about the legislation as we have community members that want to be a partner. I just want to keep that in mind. And then, yeah, the water rate study, do we know when we're going to have that back in our hands?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilman Hagy. I believe we have a draft in our possession as of this morning. Full disclosure, staff has not reviewed that study in any great detail, but we are in possession of a draft.
Thanks.
With that said, and I think, were you on that water rate study, if I recall, did you say something about the EPA had told us that if we don't raise raw water rates, we get dinged, or?
No, they were asking why we hadn't for so many years, because that can be an indicator that we're not maintaining our plant.
Okay.
And I don't mean to speak for Jason, he's not here, but, you know, the inference is, if you're not raising your rates, so you're not investing in your plant, so maybe we ought to be looking a little harder here. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I get it. I mean, I remember you bringing that up, and I was still concerned. I wasn't sure how they did that, and I know we're investing in our plant.
Sure. And if I could add, even capital needs aside, just as we've seen with the cost of inflation, really has an impact to our plant even from just a chemical cost standpoint. So, without getting into the nitty-gritty, I think it's recommended from the EPA, just from a health of the system standpoint, to minimally attempt to keep up with inflation, let alone the future capital needs of the plant. So, that's something that this study's absolutely looking to undertake. And EPA has brought it up, not so much as a ding, but again, just to remain, retain the viability of the plant from an economic standpoint, it's really something that every city and plant should look at.
Ding was a legal term that I was using.
Speaking of legal, I was wondering if Ohio Edison could maybe, with that $60 million that they bribed people with, maybe they could use that to replace the poles. I don't know. I'm just spitting balling.
Anything else for Mr. Lasco? All right, next is the mayor's discussion. I'll keep this short. First of all, I want to thank Patricia. I've known her for several years. She was a neighbor, and as far as I know, she's done a great job, and I think she's helped out tremendously with the Parks Department. So, best wishes on her retirement. I do want to welcome Stu and Jeff, councilmen tonight. Appreciate you guys and thank you for all the hard work you're doing, and I know you guys are working into it, and so far, everything's good that I hear. So, great. I am going to have Stu run one of the meetings some night, just because of, I like to hear him talk. Other than that, I want to thank the staff for all their hard work, their continued hard work. Parks Department, city staff, working with the economic development that's going on in the city. A lot of great things, a lot of big things are happening. And other than that, I want to thank the council, too. Everything's been going great, I think. With that said, we will go for the good of the order. Mr. Biddlecombe.
All right. I'd also like to thank staff and thank Patricia and hope she enjoys her retirement. And then, welcome Jen, and then also welcome Alex Richter, a new part-time officer. I actually work with his dad, so it's great to have him in the city. My nephews definitely enjoyed this past weekend's Easter egg hunt, so thanks to the Parks and Rec for putting that on every year. There was an excellent turnout despite the weather, so it seemed like everyone enjoyed it. The Huron Football H Team is selling mulch as a fundraiser to help support the football program, so if you're interested, you can contact Kim Weir, 419-656-0335, if you'd like to support the program. And I'd like to thank Mike Riddle. Julie Swecki sent us all an email. He was out there, I guess, shoveling the snow off the sidewalks all winter long, so I appreciate that from him. I saw on Facebook, there is an informal poll, which would you prefer Huron to be in the future, the same or like Vermillion with a downtown and lots of businesses? And from what I could see, the majority picked to be like Vermillion with the downtown and lots of businesses. So, I just thought that was, even though it's not really a scientific poll, that was kind of important to kind of note. Home games coming up, girls softball on April 15th, 16th, 18th, 19th, and the 21st; boys' baseball on April 15th and 18th; boys' tennis on April 14th, 19th, and 21st; and the track is tonight, April 19th, 23rd, and 26th. So, please go support those student athletes and go Tigers.
Thank you, Mr. Biddlecombe. Mr. Claus?
I just want to welcome Jeff and Stu aboard, and you guys have hit the ground running, and we appreciate all your hard work, along with the rest of the staff. And just getting ready for summer here, as of a nice sunny day today, I think we're all getting anxious to get out on the water and enjoy our lakefront community. That's it.
Mr. Dyke?
Congratulations, Patricia Irving, on your retirement. You've been very helpful every time I'm in there to get things signed up for my children, so thank you for all of your work and efforts. Welcome to everybody. Matt, you and your team, good job, a lot of great things. Excited for more to come, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Graves?
I don't have anything tonight.
Yeah, Mr. Hagy?
Oh, sorry, I have nothing.
I would just like to throw, and William mentioned it, Mike Riggle. Yeah, he's like an icon in the community when he's out there with his snow shovel. So, thank you so much for everything you do, Mr. Riggle. And with that said, there's no executive sessions. We'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you, everyone.